There we go, all right. We're live and welcome to this workshop, the Auburn School Committee. This evening, we've got a couple of issues. One, we're going to talk amongst ourselves about communications and things that have been going on in the community and what people have heard and what response they feel we as a board, again, remind you that we act as a board. But this is an opportunity to discuss things that have been happening, perhaps communications you've had, information that you've received, like to share with other members. Sometimes that's difficult because we need to be doing that in open session or in public. So it's desirable to have this type of workshop when an issue gets the level of attention that this one seems to have brought along. So we're here to just discuss some things, what you've heard, what your feelings are, whether there's more information that's going to be needed, if you need explanation of certain issues. We've got Olivia joining us because she has a student voice in this, which should help us some perhaps, and to understand what's going on at the high school perhaps with feet on the ground there. But it's really, you know, where are you at, where are we at as a district? What questions do we have for our other members of the committee? And if we have questions, the administration is here to support us with questions and answers so we can roam anywhere we want. The second part of this will be on the budget. We requested the superintendent to show the impact of the four positions that we were looking to add and what that would look like in the budget and the impact that it would have on mil rate and other things. So we will get to that. Katie has told me no later than seven so that we have ample time. And then I believe Bob has an urgent appointment that he will need to get to, so we're going to be done by 7:30.
That's what the team shows up.
And so those are our two points this evening. And I'm going to start it with whoever would like to begin with. I know Alfreda, you had...
I've got some homework that I was doing.
That's good. So I saw you over there and I assumed you would have something, but I also understand that you were at a meeting last evening where there was presentation, you had some comments perhaps you would share with that as well.
Yes.
So go ahead, you've got something.
Let's see, last night, let me see, what was the first meeting?
Oh, you were busy.
Yeah, let me look at my calendar over here to see where I've been. Yeah, I did attend a United New Auburn Association meeting. And you did a really beautiful job talking with the public there. It wasn't a large group of people. It was such a nice day that I think people kind of skipped out. And usually when you go into Raleigh's, it's like packed. But they had a lot of questions, but their questions are basically concerns about the status of our families today and the status of our kids and the stress level of our students and how our students are having a hard time to handle stress, handle their life. You know, they need people to help them, guide them, help them make decisions. What probably didn't seem that difficult for us seems very difficult for a lot of kids today. So that was basically, you know, the focus of where they were coming from. But I do think that you did a really good job in terms of explaining to them a different way of instructing and not the ABCs as they know, but this was an older group, you know, of people. So you really did an outstanding job explaining that to them. I really appreciate that. Trying to explain what we do that is new and different to people who are accustomed to a certain way of learning, that makes all the difference, helping them understand what we're doing and what's meaningful and how it makes a difference. So I was glad to have been able to make that meeting. And like I said, you're invited to come back again.
Were there any particular points in that that struck you well that you would share with the group?
Oh, gosh. I really don't know if I could pinpoint anything in particular because you've covered so many areas in terms of that.
The difference, you know, that they were hearing about some differences and things that were going on in the school, but were able to grasp kind of the full concept of that there was a need to have reporting about learning at rate.
Right, right.
And they grasped that and talked about that in different ways. And the idea that the diploma needed to stand for something.
Exactly.
And what did that...
What does it stand for?
What does that mean?
What does it tell us?
And to have that be, you know, clearly articulated. They seemed to grab onto that as business people, as people in the trades. So they were talking about that. But you're right, then they moved on to what are the challenges and how is this challenging? And what are the factors that influence that?
Right. There are a lot, I mean, the bulk, you know, most of them, if not all of them, come from a hard work ethic, a hard work ethic group of people. People who are, you know, who their predecessors opened these mills. They opened the shoe shop, they opened base mills. They are used to building things, working hard and, you know, having that great work ethic. So they were talking from that respect. They want kids to succeed, they want them to do well. But I think that it helps them to understand that things are different today than they used to be. They don't necessarily say, oh, no, not doing, let's not do it that way. What they're asking is, how are you doing it today? Explain how you're doing it. What does this mean? You know, where will it take the kids? Will they be successful? The one thing too that was intriguing to them was the fact that, you know, the work that's being done by Jim Horn, for example, in terms of working with kids out there in the field early. And they liked that, they really grabbed a hold of that because that's how they grew up.
That's how they grew and learned.
That's how they learned, you know, feet to the ground and that's how they learned and they went right straight to work. So I think you have a very supportive group of people in terms of wanting the best for their families, for their children, for their grandchildren and for the community because they're a very tight-knit group. This particular, you know, New Auburn is a really tight-knit group. And they collectively want to do what's best and they're usually what we, you know, helpers. You know, they want to help as best they can. We talked about getting into the schools, you know, sharing their expertise in the schools. So I think it's from a hands-on basis, it was really interesting. So yeah, we did that. And I didn't have a time to sneak into the school committee building meeting. I wanted to have a few minutes with that, but I went to my other meeting, the Auburn Democrats meeting after that. But, and then this morning, I attended an AARP Aging Friendly Meeting, which again, we talked about how we can use, you know, students, how students can perform service work by working with, you know, age-friendly people and helping them and having them help them as well. So I think that it was a nice carryover because the themes were kind of the same. And what we ended up talking about was it's now, we realize it takes a village. It takes this whole village, you know, to work together in terms of education, city, you know, the council, all of it. We all need to work together to get to where we think we want to be. Put us all in a good place and be there for each other. So it's kind of bringing the small-town influence back again. We're a small city, but we've become like a large city, but we want to maintain that smallness so that we know everybody and we can support everybody. So that's basically a theme from this morning and from yesterday. So I think as we discuss what goes on here, you know, for tonight, I think that if we keep that in mind, you know, what can we do that's going to make a difference for our community, for our citizens, our parents, our kids, our teachers, our administration, we all are in this together. I did write something down because with me, you know, this PBL is such a big issue and empowerment is a big issue. And if I don't get these thoughts down, then I'm going to get going on a tangent and you won't hear all the rest that I want to tell. But, you know, I was, I've had conversations with, well, let me preface it by, I'll just read to you what I wrote. I've been thinking about this for a long time and this is such an important issue and everyone has ideas and there's a lot going on and what we do will make a big difference. So I just want to preface my statements tonight, it's not long, it's just a little bit. I wanted to make sure that I got everything covered. There's a lot of things that I wanted to do to include, but I don't want to take the lion's share of our time. But I'm just highlighting some things that I observed and I have heard about. And so I want to preface my statements here tonight by stating that when it comes to affecting change, analyzing success and making decisions on the efficacy of what we're doing in education, everyone must be heard. Everyone means citizens, parents, students, teachers, administration, school committee members, everyone and even more. But what I've observed is that in all these categories of people, they want to be heard, they want to have a voice and they truly care about what we offer our young people as an ideal educational program. And they want to contribute with their ideas. How administration and school committee handles and manages these opportunities for input will make all the difference in how successful we become in providing excellence in teaching and learning and preparing our students to be ready for the postgraduate level and the real world. So bear with me as I share some of my thoughts, beliefs and suggestions. And my contacts with neighbors, citizens, parents, students, teachers, I've come to learn that many are not content with the current status of our educational focus on PBL and empowerment. That doesn't mean that many are not happy with it. There are many who are happy with it, but there are many who are not. And I think we have to be honest and grab that and say, okay, what does it look like? What are people saying and what do we do about it? I believe in being honest, open and saying, okay, this is good, this is not good, this is in between. So let's look at it and what do we do about it? This is an opportunity for us to make a difference. I know a lot of work has gone into this. I know I personally have been involved in this type of thing years ago as a teacher and as a principal. And I know the hard work that it takes and there are hard decisions to be made. So we want to do the best that we can. A second thought I had, an overarching thought was I've also come to learn that many teachers' voices have not been heard beyond those who have already witnessed from the early elementary arena. Those, we've heard from them and they've done an outstanding job and it's working very well for them. And that's good and that sounds like a keeper, we need to keep that going. But it's imperative that we hear the concerns and opinions of teachers at the upper elementary, the middle, the high school levels. And I know it's true that they do not really feel free to openly discuss these concerns and that's what I've been finding out.
So I'm going to follow up on that because I think that is a perception perhaps around...
It could be, but I'm hearing from them that they don't feel free to talk about it.
And that's what I think as a board, it's an important issue for us is why is that, is it true? And what do we have for a basis that supports that? And if so, why? And then what should be done about that?
Let's parking lot it, you know, put it in a parking lot. I mean, if we can do a parking lot thing, that's why I'm just bringing this out. Yes. And you know what? And if that's a perception or whatever the perception is, where it's coming from, let's just talk about it. Let's parking lot it, let's talk about it together and say, okay, so what is it? What does it look like? And then so what do we do about it? Once we can take care of that, then I think we're going to be moving forward really, really well. A suggestion I had about this is that, you know, to conduct a survey, to administer a survey, but put it in five categories. Don't do it by schools, do it by levels. Elementary, middle, high school, parents and students. You're going to get, you know, I know what it was like when I got surveys and I, do I answer this honestly? Do I not answer it? Do I just leave it alone or do I, you know? But I think that if you cluster them by these categories, then you'll have a picture of what elementary looks like, what's going on, how it's working. I think you're going to find this working well for elementary. And then if you do, when you get into the middle, you're going to see what the struggles are. It's not quite the same and I'm going to just say a little something about that later, having taught middle school myself. And then at the high school level, how is it going there? I know it's new for them, so there's struggles with, you know, startup. When you're brand new and you're learning something new and you're getting into it the first time, there are other struggles there. So what are those struggles? And let's identify those key points and see what we can do about it so that we can, you know, work with it. So I think if you're looking at these five categories, then you're going to get a true picture of what elementary people are saying, what middle school people are saying, high school people are saying, what the parents are saying, what the students are saying. And the students are the beneficiaries of this. You guys are the ones who are, you know, the field testers. And, you know, I know that, you know, students are honest, they're going to say it the way it is, what they like, don't like. And we learn a lot from students, we learn both ways. That'll help teachers freely come forward with their thoughts, opinions, suggestions. And it'll help us understand the variance between success or failure at each level. And most importantly, we will be able to analyze where our parents and students are coming from. The upper-level teachers, having been there myself and teaching special ed at that level, you know, they have a different experience with PBL and empowerment than those at the earlier elementary level because they deal with students at a much different developmental level with very different developmental needs. And we know that the middle school child, for example, is a really different, a unique, exciting, you know, level to work with. So they may be interacting very, very differently with PBL and empowerment. I'm finding from what some people are telling me is that their students are losing interest in their studies because no matter how hard they work, they will earn that same level two as students who do not apply themselves to a higher standard. So there is a wide discrepancy between students who are highly focused and driven and those who are starting to zone out, yet that proficiency score is going to be the same. So the kids say, how fair is that? That person got a two and I got a two and I know what that person is doing, which is very different than what I'm doing. So there is that perception, so that I gleaned on that. So what's happening is some disenfranchisement from the groups of kids. And they say to themselves, oh, why bother? Why should I, why should I do all this hard work when I'm going to end up with the same level two or level three that the other ones are going to get? So that's some of what I'm hearing. And regarding grading, do we truly know that the universities, the colleges and the trade schools are really ready for a PBL diploma? I know we struggled with that way back when I was a principal. And they really weren't ready at that time. And I really don't know if they're ready now. So we need to find out about that to see if they truly are ready. Can they make the adjustment, are they okay with it? Because if kids are applying and they're finding that they have to put in another year or two with prep school, I mean, what's the purpose of that? So that's the other end of that. On the other hand, I do know that we have advanced placement courses and kids can work towards that. That is outstanding. I mean, that's good, that's, that's a keeper. Those are some of the keepers, you know, back and forth as we go along. That's outstanding. A lot of students, schools don't have that. And I just have three more items. One is about empower and I know I am certainly hearing from, you know, teachers that it's flawed in some cases. It's not working well. They would like to revisit, what was it you had before that? You had...
Power school.
Power school.
Yeah, power school. They would love to go back to that because what happens with empower is you're assessing minutia sometimes and you're spending all this time on that. You've got the big picture, but some of that stuff is, is it really important? Should we be assessing these, you know, less important items? Is that going to get them where they want to be when they leave school? What's going to be the big takeaway that they're going to need to bring them, you know, to be able to compete in the real world? I know at the middle school level, they had, at one time, what was introduced to them was an expeditionary learning model which is challenge-based. Is that something that was taken out or are they still involved in that? Because it seemed to be very popular with the middle school people. Yes.
So they explored expeditionary learning, which would have provided a consultant. And so when they first looked at it, it would put us in a box to be expeditionary learning. You have to follow a very prescriptive implementation of it. So we had a consultant come to the middle school, meet with them and discuss it. So it wasn't, so a lot of the components of the expeditionary learning could be done without buying into the accountability to the expeditionary learning group. Because if you're labeled expeditionary learning, you have to have these certain things. So that's what the discussion was. And so we decided if they wanted to do crew, who is one thing, advisory, they could do that. They want to do project-based learning, they could do that. So it was to allow for more flexibility.
And again, that's the match...
They never did it. They never officially did it. We explored it.
Yeah, because it seems, you know, as we learn about, you know, kids at the middle school level, for example, they're a unique and fun, you know? Highs and lows and, you know, growing up one minute and, you know, young the next minute. But that seems to be a good match for where they are developmentally.
And they visited the middle school in Portland, King Middle School. They did go and visit.
Yes, okay. I have another question, it has to do with special education. And that was my concern way, way back then too. How are special ed kids going to be able to understand and keep up and be able to perform so that they feel that they have learned skills that they can apply when they leave? So I'm just asking that big how, you know, because that I don't have, you know, the answers to that because it's always been a concern of mine because some of these, you know, a lot of these kids have great skills, but in different areas. So how can we capitalize on their skills if they feel successful and ready to meet the real world out there? Another, my last one, my last point that I wanted to make was that I know Adam gave me some information about the salaries of the coaches. And, but I, for me to get a true picture before we talk about budget, I need to know the whole enchilada. What does, what does it cost for us to implement all of this? You know, in addition with the assessments, you know, training, a ballpark figure on how much training takes. Training is important. And how much does that, does that cost us in the budget? So that I can, you know, make an informed decision on when we get to the budget part of it. So I can say, okay, this is what we're spending on that and this is what we're spending in other areas and how does that all work in? I'll end by saying, you know, these are just like some thoughts I had, I had other thoughts too, but these are the ones that rose to the top that I was concerned about. And I wanted to end by saying that we need to delve into all of this more deeply and involve more stakeholders and hear more concerns, ideas and suggestions and make changes where we need to, grab the stuff that's working, keep it. Let's have like, you know, what's good, what's not good and what's in between and where do we go? And I think it's like solving a puzzle, it's like revisiting. And as I said, I know so much work has gone into this. I know that's, you know, it's been Shelley's life for many, many years and, you know, I don't want to negate that. But I think we're at a crossroads right now and I think now's the time to take a look at it, a serious look at it and say, where do we go? What do we keep? What do we change? And how do we best meet the needs of everyone involved, especially our students? And I think that, you know, again, going back to it takes a village. Let's look at that whole village and see what the needs are and then pull it all together and, you know, work on that. So these are just, you know, some of the thoughts that I had to kind of, as a springboard, to serve as a springboard for our discussion and...
Such a survey as Alfreda talked about is going to be 10, right?
Yeah, so Shelley, you want to update what's going on?
So we had a group get together before vacation and talk about the task force. That was a voluntary group from the middle school and high school and Franklin, that's right. Scott was there too. And so we have put out information about the task force and we have put out a link for people who want to apply to be a member of the task force. Right now, as of today, I have 24 applications done on that online application. And we have a meeting scheduled for Monday for us to, for me to bring forward the applicants to the planning committee so that we can do some member selection. In terms of surveys, Jen Heidrick, who teaches an anthropology class at Edward Little, her students have completed a student survey. And there are plans to have that completed by the middle school and seventh, eighth and ninth grade students. So it was actually designed by the students in the anthropology class. Jen and some other teachers took care of the teacher survey and that's gone out widely. So we're starting to collect data there. And the other task for the task force on Monday is to take a look at my draft of the parent survey. That'll bring to them then. And so that will go out as well once we have that ready.
Super wonderful.
Who was on this committee that selects applicants and or declines them?
So what we did is we put out an all-call to say who wants to be part of planning the task force. And we had teachers from the middle school, teachers from the high school and from Franklin. And I was there and Scott was there and Michelle came in. And so they were the ones who generated the ideas about the task force. They were the ones who talked about how many members from each stakeholder group should be in there. And so they're the ones that I'm going to bring the applications back to and ask them to take a look. Well, they're really guideline-wise, they were talking about wanting to make sure there was a balance of viewpoints in each of the stakeholder groups.
So, sounds good. Thank you.
The teacher survey for the high school went out before break. We've already, I think, the last calculation, if we had like 85 teachers, we had about 51 responses. So I sent it back out again saying, if you haven't had time to do that, please take some time. And it has been sent to the middle school and to the elementary schools for all of those teachers to respond. And that will allow, the way it's crafted is select what grade level you are in. So it allows for that data to be honed in as to what level where you are so that it can be aggregated and disaggregated as needed.
That'll give some data for the task force to start working with when that gets formed. Does anyone want to ask Alfreda clarification on some of the points that she made? And then I'll come to you, Pat. But if you, if she brought up a particular point that you wanted us to elaborate on, that was important to you, that we want to make sure we cover? If you've got something you want to highlight things, but I'll come to you, Pat then, go ahead.
Okay, here goes. Thank you for calling the workshop. I really appreciate it. I think people need to know that how I feel is having sat here for a month and a half at public participation and not being able to speak has been very confining for me and very frustrating. I have reviewed dozens of emails that I've received from people. I have also had the wheels turning inside. And where is Laura? She's right here. Laura sent us a kind of a mishmash of all of the concerns that they have. And when I compared her list to mine, it was pretty similar. So I think that we have identified some real issues with proficiency-based learning. I think the list that I have, there's nothing on this list that we cannot fix, that we cannot improve. And I'm trying to be positive about this whole experience. I, one of the issues that you alluded to was the staff being afraid to come forward. And that's very disheartening for me. I've worked in the system for 25 years. I have never been afraid of anything or anyone. I have always been treated with respect. I have always actually never felt like anybody was above me or below me. I was very fortunate, I was at Edward Little the whole time. We have a family... We have a family connection there. I mean, I've known Scott since forever and that feeling is still there. And if there are pockets of this fear, I think we really, really need to address it. What you said at the beginning was, is there really, is it real? So I think we owe it to ourselves because I can't come to a decision unless I know what's going on. I think we owe it to the teachers who feel this way because quite frankly, I don't want them feeling that way. There's absolutely no reason for teachers to feel that way. Absolutely none. And I want that addressed. I really do. You know, we're all in this together. We are in this for the kids. I mean, we've got so many great kids in Auburn. Look at Emily here. I mean, they're awesome kids. And what we're doing and the work that I've seen over the last six or eight years is incredible. It's incredible. Is any system perfect? Absolutely not. Was the system we had before perfect? Absolutely not. Is the next system that comes down the way absolutely perfect? Absolutely not. It's not going to happen. But I think for me personally, we are in this deep. There was a lot of questions about how we got here and concerns about this, that and the other thing. And you know what? It's water over the dam. We've done that. It's happened. We need to move forward. We need to find what is not counterproductive. We need to find out what's going to work and make the system work for all of our kids. Now, from my personal experience, I have two grandkids in the system. I have two grandkids at Green New Gloucester. Their older brother, my daughter and son-in-law hauled him out because of some of the concerns that our parents are having now and he's going to graduate from Cheverus High School in June. Do I agree with what they did? Not really. But, you know, what are you going to do? I've seen both sides. I've talked to my kids down there. Matthew and Noah, they're in fifth and eighth grade. I've talked to my two in the fourth and the sixth grade. I'm hearing some good things. I'm hearing some good things. So I guess what I want to say most importantly is we need to sit down and we need to work on this. And yes, Alfreda, we need to bring people to the table. I especially want ninth grade, eighth grade and seventh grade teachers on the task force that are working with the kids now.
They've applied.
Absolutely, they need to be there. I want to hear what their experience has been. I want to know what's working and I want to know what's not working. Okay? And I'm, like I said, some of these things, I mean, I can read some. Students can't get a four on some targets, especially at the middle school. Fours are not defined for many targets. There's much confusion about the difference between a one, two, one, two, three, four and a 100. Students finish a target and they can't go on because the teacher's not ready. So they sit and waste time. I mean, this goes on and on. You've heard it. It's been eloquently spoken. We've heard it over and over again. Like I said, there's not one thing on this list that we can't address. Okay? And so I'm hoping that we can do that and that we can move forward for our kids.
Very good.
Yeah, getting beyond this seems like a major hurdle. It's almost every day that there's something new in the newspaper or the legislature. The city of Lawston recently, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but they voted to go back to one, 100 rating. In the legislature, a bill passed, but of course the legislature adjourned without finalizing anything. A bill passed to do away with PBL. Of course, that probably would have got vetoed by our friendly governor, so who knows what would have happened. But once we get beyond this PBL thing, I think we can move forward into greener pastures.
Can I, can I interject? I don't believe they did away with performance-based learning. They did away with the requirement to certify in the grading system to certify the targets. That's my understanding of it. Maybe Shelley can reiterate.
I think, I think it was a move to change the, the way I understand it through my curriculum leaders' stream is that there was language in there about must. And they, the proposal that came off, out of Ed Committee changed the musts to may. So that it basically changed the proficiency-based diploma law.
Right.
To say that districts could do the proficiency-based diploma or they could revert back to the prior diploma requirements.
That was just the diploma.
But that only came out of Ed Committee.
Yeah, it never passed both houses.
Right. It never went through.
I haven't gone any further.
That was diploma, yes.
Just diploma.
Diploma.
Diploma, not.
And it did say also that, and I hear from the MEA, being a retired, you know, project director, that schools who wanted to continue were, they weren't going to tell you not to do it. Let's put it that way.
It altered may.
Yeah.
Dan, have you got?
I think they've pretty much covered it.
They have?
I'm hoping that the task force will, you know, I don't know a lot of this stuff and come to a, you know, a happy medium and fix.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
Think, anything that you've, that has come to you from the community that you want to share, that, yeah, you want to make sure is highlighted, that you want us notes on or going to need a response for, that need to bring out? Or has it been covered? Are we?
Yeah, they pretty much covered it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that, you know, getting all the information, we've compiled a lot, the emails we've received, the information you've been giving us, the things we've heard at public comment as well to organize it. And obviously, we all have that. So it's not that we don't have it. And that, you know, Shelley and others from the task force, those will be our guiding, obviously, questions and concerns. You know, the reporting and grading was coming up, bubbling up as number one concern. So obviously, that's the first thing that needs to be tackled. That's the most critical because we're coming to an end of the year and we want to be ready for the next year and we want to give ample time to review. So that's why those are the highest priority, not to say other concerns. One thing we did prepare is for tonight, because the transcript has come up and around colleges and so forth. And so if you would like to see what is our current transcript and what the proposed transcript is, we can show that to you this evening. Even though that may shift because the task force, depending on where the grading reporting goes, that will probably have to shift as well, possibly. So, but just to give you a viewpoint of what does a transcript for EL students look like right now? And what was the proposed as we were working through this with the first class?
I think that would be a good idea because when I saw the difference between the one that was already proposed, but this new transcript, I much preferred the latter. Because I think it was, it told a lot more, described a lot more to the reader, to the student, to the parents.
And going forward, if, sorry to interrupt. Going forward, it would be nice if you could keep us informed with.
Oh, definitely.
With these students' acceptance rate into college test scores, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, definitely. I mean, what's interesting is, and I know people have heard this, and when we met with the Bates Admissions Officer and the USM recently this year, they get transcripts that look widely different. Every high school in the United States does not have the same transcript, nor does the state of Maine. And so there are a variety of transcripts that colleges receive. And so it is our job as a high school to communicate what our transcript represents. That's our job to do, to make sure our students, the admissions officer, understand. And as Bates says, they get transcripts that have no grades on them. They're narratives. So what's most important is they understand our transcript. So they gave us feedback as to what's important to them regarding transcripts. So Shelley's going to share. This is the, I, current transcript.
Right. So Katie was sent this sample from the high school. I'm just confirming something with Peter. But so this is our current transcript. So it shows the courses.
This is a current student that's graduating.
Shows the courses completed, shows the grade and the credit earned. And I was just confirming with Peter, I thought that we, so I don't know if it's because it's some sort of not final, final yet. So right now, it's showing a cumulative percent on the 100-point scale, but that does, when the transcript gets finalized at the end of the senior year, there's a GPA that reports out there as well. So the reason that's not showing on here is it's not a final transcript.
Yes.
This is a sample, let's see if I can zoom in for you, a sample of the transcript we've talked about. It also retains courses. The conversation we just recently had was that we need to talk about the courses reporting out by year. Colleges like that, they like to know what students took each year. So that's one of the changes that we haven't made to this yet, but that's what we've talked about. So it still gives the courses, it gives the overall course score, it gives the credit and it also gives a GPA, which is one of the misconceptions I have seen and some, some concerns is that the new transcript would not have a GPA, it will have a GPA. The reason that it will is because there was work done that included admissions people in designing this transcript. And admissions people said that the things that are important to them on a transcript are the courses that were taken. They like to know that. The score, the grade for those courses in whatever form the grade comes in and an overall GPA. Those were the things that they said were important to still be there in the year that the courses were taken. So that's why when this new transcript was designed, it was designed to retain those things. We also built out a way to report out the proficiency students had completed. This is the second side of the transcript. So it would report out by content area, and these are our standards. And it would show the average score for those standards and the number of target students were proficient on. It also reports out if they've gone beyond what's required in terms of the progression of learning for the standard. So when we showed this transcript to the admissions person at Bates, he said, I'll be honest, we probably won't spend a lot of time on this side. The front side is what we're going to look at, it's what we've, we're used to, it's what we're used to interpreting. But he said it contained, the only feedback he gave us when he saw this was that piece about it not saying what year students took classes in. So we took that feedback and are working on making that change.
Thank you.
Yes.
Further questions or, Pat?
I have a question, obviously, from this audience, about the anthropology class. Why didn't they do the parent and community survey? They did just the students.
The students only, you might know the answer better than I do.
It's still a class. And for those of you who want to come, they're doing some presentations on their project on Friday and Monday in the library, so come on in. So it was like, how much can they be taking on? And so we started out of the gate of saying, we have these three surveys that we want to do and like, where's the common theme? And each one's going to have a different set of questions, but not different, different themes, like how we ask students questions about things is going to be a little different because we're going to want to dive a little deeper into some elements with the staff. And so what we really were looking at was, let's get the staff one going as soon as we can because that's some real important stakeholder feedback that we need to get right out of the gate. So we went with that. The students felt really comfortable about doing that. It was really, how much can we put on their plate to be able to do that? So they have started to develop some drafts of what could, you know, we've looked at some iterations of the teacher, the student, the parent and really what is the common places that we're wanting to really start gathering feedback. It became clear that we wanted to be talking about grading and scoring. But again, it was to balance, like, they were willing to take that on, but they also still have class that they had to do. So it was just, let's not put all of the burden on to that class and to Jen. And as she was developing that survey for the teacher, she, it was not just her class. She solicited four or five different other teachers to be working on that. And so it became a lot of work that was going on. And so we didn't want to just keep humping all of that work right on top of them with what they've already doing, but give us a building block and let's start digging in.
Okay, so Jen and some of the other teachers on the planning committee, is that who did the survey?
Jen's on the planning committee, but some of the other teachers said, I'm not, I don't have time for, to go to that meeting, but this is my input. Jen brought that input. Jen brought that back. They worked on it. She met with me, talked about it, said, what do you think? Great, good. Any feedback is good. Let's do it.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I didn't screen anything out or anything in, just like, let's cluster those into sections.
Right.
Olivia, Olivia is the student rep. I've asked her if she'd shared just what she's, her perceptions within the high school because she's there every, every day and student feedback and thinks she might have a couple of things to share in that regard.
At the beginning, a lot of students thought that it was a lot of work and that it was really challenging, but I haven't heard them complaining at all recently. And I think it's just going to take some getting used to. And also with the teachers, they said empower system was hard, but I think that's definitely something that can be fixed and can be improved on. So I think it's getting better.
Getting better. As we like. Trying to improve all. All right. Faith, did you have any feedback for what you're hearing in the community or points that you want to?
I mean, I've heard things. I've had friends, I've had parents of students call and a lot of them just don't understand the whole concept and why we're doing this. Obviously, change is never, you know, easy or necessarily, that's not good, but nobody likes change. But I think, like parents have said, some of us have said, a lot of people still don't understand the whole concept. So any education at any time, I think is helpful. And I explain it, you know, I explain the basic concepts and answer their questions and then they seem to, you know, they get it, but they have more questions. So I think that's the biggest, the misconception that people don't understand why we would change it and what it really means to go to proficiency-based. But I have heard a lot about people, you know, are having a hard time that their kids aren't going to have an actual number, you know, a grade point average, but like you just said, that will be on there. But the whole, they'd like to have that number, not a one, two, three, four.
Grading again, which we've been highlighting. Anyone else have a particular comment? I had, which I haven't shared yet, but I, because I'm still reading it. There was a study written by a graduate student at the University of Vermont, because Vermont has also implemented a proficiency-based diploma law. And this was a study, I think it was done three or four years ago by a graduate student. It was a fairly lengthy report that was trying to get data related to the implementation. And so they have studied teachers and classrooms and students and dealt with all the stakeholders. So it's a, it's a report that I'm still working through. And as I get, get through that, I will share that with people so that they can read it themselves. It's fairly lengthy, about 150-some pages, I think. But it's summarized in a couple of spots and that would give you a couple of spots to look at. And I'll try and pull out a couple of the quotes that, both from teachers, they're implementing it and things, where this study was going and what, and some of its findings. So that may be helpful because they've been, they've been doing this for a few years and implementing it. And it's not without its controversy in Vermont as well. So that's what I will be sharing for too long. Yes, Pat?
I have one question of my own, sort of evolved from talking to a parent, but there's some, been some concerns about some of the classes, the rigor being reduced so that the targets can be met by all students. Now, I kind of know what the answer is, but I kind of would like to hear this outside. And also, if a student takes a class, like a, for example, a government class or a chem class or a biology class, and they want more than they, than the basic class, I know that the next level's up, we have, we have honors, we have AP. What about the kids in the middle that don't want to take an honors or an AP class, but they need to go on? For example, they want to be an EMT or they want to go to nursing school, they need the chem, they need the bio, whatever. What's in there for these kids? I know we're doing really, really well with the AP stuff. And I know that we, you know, but I really think there's a little bit of a middle group there that might be getting shifted aside. So don't hate me.
No. I never would, Pat. No, I never would, Pat.
Yeah.
I think that your question about the rigor is an important one, because I just said to Katie today, so you know that we used to have academic level classes and college prep classes, and then we had honors or AP. And I think because we did away with academic level classes, and we are saying the diploma is based on this set of proficiencies, that people have made assumptions that because we're expecting it of all students, we took the prior expectation and lowered it. And the truth is that, like, if I just talk about science, having been a biology teacher and knowing what I taught, if I look at the curriculum that's laid out for biology, it is what was my college prep curriculum, the level three. So, the part of what's behind the proficiency-based diploma is this expectation that you have high learning expectations for all students. So, eliminating the academic option for kids wasn't, didn't result in us lowering the learning expectations, actually resulted in us raising the expectations for a whole group of kids.
Okay. So, go ahead.
I think the, the concept, and Shali can correct me, I'm sure, I think we have finally defined a curriculum with targets that begin at K and go through 12.
Pre-K.
Yeah, that you now, you now have a roadmap that says, "We start at here, and, you know, here's, here's, I won't call it an endpoint so much, but this is where we need to be at grade 12 in order to graduate." Now, you may make that, those proficiencies at grade 10 if you're really fast, or you may take a little bit longer than 12, depending where you are. But we're finally defined all the steps, all the targets that we want people to learn and master to that point, whereas before it's been pieces, it's been a chunk, it's been, okay, you take this course, and that's what you learn, and then, okay, now you take this, this course, and that's what you learn. And there may be pieces in the middle in terms of our total competency that you never get taught, because they were never part of this course or this course. And I guess the example that was in this research was the French Revolution, when they were teaching history, was, oh, they hadn't covered the French Revolution, and, "Well, we'll do that in, you know, 10 minutes this afternoon's class." So that, because it wasn't laid out and all the needs spelled out basically from K through 12, that in the previous curriculums, there could be big chunks that were just missed time-wise or whatever, or the way the teacher structured the class. And then you went to the next class, which another teacher had structured, that may not have picked up where this one had exactly. So now, I think I'm right, Shali, that we don't have those gaps anymore, in a sense that here are the targets, and they take us from here to here, am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's consistency in terms of the learning expectations, the targets.
So, so that's the, that's, that's a change in that we're hopeful of not having the gaps in our curriculum that could occur in the previous.
Right, but I'm concerned because originally, I mean, the main learning results, they were, all those standards were embedded in the classrooms, in the courses that we taught, okay? Now, for me personally, it's stupid to go back to Portland High School in the 60s, but I never took chem and physics. I was going in a humanities pathway, okay? I had no interest. I got out of biology, and I got through it, and that was the end of it. So, I guess my concern is, why do all kids have to take all of those courses, all of those subjects? I understand, for example, especially English, there's a lot of skill in there, history is a lot of, there's, there's not specific time periods, but it's, it's things like culture and economics and society and how it impacts, it's not really K, A through Z for history. Science is more factual, is that correct? Concepts that they have to learn. But what I, I guess what I'm saying is, and maybe, and maybe the state's going to go this way when they talk about the subjects that they're going to hold the kids accountable to. You know, the basic English skills, basic math skills, basic science skills, what everybody should know to function in government, in a democracy, should, and American history and all that kind of stuff. And also, because we live in a, in a world that's getting smaller. But beyond that, I guess maybe I'm talking about pathways, beyond that, isn't that where a lot of those targets need, that you have some choice?
Yeah, beyond what's required for the diploma, yes.
Yes.
So, we have that built into our curriculum. There are places where there are learning targets that are beyond what's required for the diploma. So, I was saying to Michelle, like, a student who pursues EMT, or a student who takes some of our elective offerings, there are still targets that are associated with that course, but they may be beyond what's required for graduation. So, it's not, and we've always had, there's always been a requirement for a certain number of years of content.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
So, when we looked at the proficiency-based diploma requirements, we fit that into what we've traditionally required, so that, in other words, we laid out our diploma-required standards in science to take place over three years. And then, there are some different options. The first couple of years in science has always been pretty straightforward anyway. Kids have taken a physical science and a life science, and then some third year of science. So, we have developed, like, we have a chemistry through agriculture offering, right? So that we have different ways that students can still get to proficiency on the same targets, but in a different context. That's the kind of work we've been doing, but we still sort of placed it within the same number of courses as we've always required. But then there are options beyond that.
Yes, yeah, okay.
That's where, that's where we would see on the transcript, where it would say the above and beyonds. That could happen in a course, or that could happen like with a student taking an AP. This is what's required, but some of the other curriculum that happens in an AP course goes above and beyond, and they would be hitting other targets that are above and beyond, and so that's what would get indicated on the, not only would it say an AP course, which is something that the colleges said that they wanted, but it also would allow for the progress of those above and beyonds. That student could hit a three, or they could hit another four on those, that's going farther or deeper for those courses. And that, like I said, that could happen in an AP, or that could be expanding that with an EMT course, or any of the other elective courses that we have, marine biology, like, it's not a required course, students still want to take that, we still want to offer that, and that goes on to their transcript, and that allows for those above and beyonds.
Okay, now, the AP courses, those syllabi are approved by the college board, but then you've also embedded the targets in them? Okay.
Or we've, or we've added the college board required targets, because whether they call them targets or not, they're very clear. If you've ever seen the expectations of an AP syllabus, it is very, very heavily laden with learning objectives. So, we have put those into our curriculum map.
Okay, good, thank you.
That's an excellent question that you asked, it really is.
When we talk about curriculum work, when, I have a couple of teachers who've come forth and said, "I want to try this new course, Scott," and I say, "Okay," then the curriculum work that they need to, is define it, and then what, what is that going to be? What are those targets? And we can talk about those specific targets, or we can talk about the guiding principles, like, we got to have it tied to something, you can't just teach a course that's not related to anything.
Right.
Right.
You're taking care of two pockets of students here. You're looking at those who are college-bound, and those who are, you know, bound to go to CMCC, trade schools, equally important, but different paths. So, I understand totally what you asked, it made a lot of sense, why take, you know, the AP courses? You might be able to do that, but does that, is it relevant for you if you're planning to be an EMT, that kind of thing? So, that's good, because it meets the needs of the kids, and it gets them there more quickly, because they're in a hurry to get there, you know? They want to get out in the real world and start their life, you know? Right?
Any closing comments that, we're going to move on to the budget, but I go around, if you've got anything else you'd like to share that...
Is there a deadline for the task force?
Uh, no, it'll be...
Well, we, because we're, our first task is, is grading and reporting, we have a deadline to make sure that we have decisions made to be ready for whatever happens next year, whatever the decision is to modify things for next year.
And we've talked, you know, the reason we labeled it task force is there's immediate tasks, but we've also talked about continuing as a steering committee, because this needs ongoing check-in and adjust so that we can keep improving. So, there's a lot of work to do, there's immediate work, yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, great model.
All right, we're going to address the budget, because the city council is having our budget on their agenda on Monday. We need to finalize what we're going to...
Adam's going to come, you can be dismissed.
Have Katie present them, so that we're all on the same page, and we know where we're going, then we may have a chance to deal with that on Wednesday. At this point, we were, we asked the administration to show us the impact of the four positions, and I think we have those numbers, so we want to...
Okay, so, Monday night, if you were on the board last year, you remember when the city manager did his presentation and we did our presentation, that's what the similar model is going to be. So, it starts at 5:30, and I don't know who's going to go first, but we'll do a similar thing that we've done in the past, we go over what is the proposed budget before your May 2nd budget approval. And so, this is for me to get direction from the board on what we're presenting for Monday night's joint meeting, so we can receive, oh, sorry, I was talking. So, Adam can review what is before you, but we did take the four positions that you discussed, and I'm combining the two halftime guidance to one. So, when I say one, it's those two guidance position, Bonnie wants one, Bonnie?
But usually, the city council workshop at 5:30.
Yes.
That's for the city council. Are we supposed to be there at 5:30 or at 7:00?
You're there at 5:30, it's just a workshop, they don't have a regular meeting. So, yes, you're supposed to be there, because it's you hearing the city budget, you hearing our budget, and then any feedback we are going to take in, so that on May 2nd's workshop, we can discuss that, okay?
So, just to recap, last time we met, we had received some good news on our health insurance, we'd budgeted at 9%, it came in at 1.2%, and that left about $400,000 of adjustment that we needed to decide what to do with. We added a couple items for laptops and SafeStop software, bus routing software, and that was $45,000. So then, the task was, what do we do with what's left? And we were asked to run some numbers for the four positions, and maybe Katie can remind what the four positions.
Right, so, I combined the two half guidance to make it one, so it didn't get confusing, okay? And then, the two intervention positions, and then the instructional coach at the elementary level. So, those were the four we discussed.
So, the top line on the handout that you've got shows if we added the four new positions, but we had a goal of cutting the, our use of our fund balance in half, so going from using $900,000, which we've done for the last five years, to using $450,000. If we were to do that and add the four new positions at approximately $75,000 each, it would, it would take the local increase to 3.91%. So, that's just to give you a sense of what that would look like. It would be a 35 cent increase to the mill rate. So then, we took another tack and looked at it a different way. If we kept it, the local increase under three, and we used a number of 2.85 to keep it under three, what would that look like? And if we did that, we would be using $639,000 of fund balance. So, it's a swing of about $190,000 on the fund balance usage if we were to add the four positions and keep the local increase below three. So, those are the two scenarios you've gotten from.
So that the, the impact and that the, the difference between the two numbers is how much of the fund balance that we use in order to fund that, to keep the local share under the three, which is what the city council has been receptive to, as long as we stay under that. They seem to be receptive to the budget. So, using more of the fund balance to do that makes us more dependent on that fund balance and being able to achieve that year after year. So, that is a, an implication when you, when you bring it down and use the fund balance, that you need that money in the subsequent years in order to fund that position, those positions. But at this point, we have been successful in maintaining our, our fund balance, but Adam assures me that we're going to be tighter on our budget in the future years, so it may not be as readily available as we've had it in the last four or five, I think, at this point, so...
Well, we always like to hope things will break our way and we'll generate some nice fund balance, but we certainly can't bank on that.
Not a good idea to bank on it. Yes, Pat?
Is the 75,000, is that on the high end of the estimate?
Fully burdened, so that'll have the, the health and the benefits all included in that, but that is the high end.
I understand that, but...
But that is the high end, so...
We take an, I think it's average, we take the average of the salary, and then we add the benefits to it. So, and we have to do the high end of the benefits, correct? So, it's an average salary plus the high end of the benefit.
Okay, all right.
One of these positions, excuse me.
Yes.
One of these positions is for a teacher's aide?
No, one is for, so you have the guidance, you mean the instructional coach, a teacher's aide?
Right.
No, it's, it would be, right now, Auburn Middle School has an instructional coach, the Edward Little High School has an instructional coach, and then there's a district instructional coach position that will be moved to the high school next year, and that person will be doing halftime gifted and talented and the instructional coach support. So, this would be an instructional coach at the elementary being in addition to the two technology coaches. But it's, that coach works on the curriculum, works on the teacher evaluation system, and also works on the proficiency-based work that we're doing with the learning targets.
But the four new, excuse me, the four new positions are?
The, so we have a halftime guidance at Franklin, halftime guidance at East Auburn, so I combine those to say that would be one position. Then, an interventionist at Park Avenue, an interventionist at Sherwood Heights to support students who are not meeting benchmarks, and then instructional coach at the elementary.
How much is the instructional coach?
It would be the 75,000. They've all been budgeted at the same amount, because an instructional coach is under a teacher's contract.
What would be your highest, what's your, I mean, your average and your highest caseload in terms of the classrooms? Because my, my intent in asking that question is I'm looking at, you know, the efficacy of having a teacher with a smaller group of kids lightening up the load so that that teacher is actually, you know, performs those services.
Do you mean the instructional coach?
No.
I mean, the interventions, how many students does the interventionist serve?
Can become more of an interventionist as a teacher if you have a lower caseload. So, what would be the highest caseloads that we have? Well, you, you really can't say that for, you know, high school, it depends on how many courses you've got, but at the elementary level and the middle school level, we overloaded in our classrooms.
So, you've added, this, this...
I'm looking at...
Right, this budget already includes class size reduction teachers. So, there are five, can you pull up my PowerPoint for me? There's class reduction teachers that are already in the budget for Sherwood Heights, Fairview, Park Avenue, and Auburn Middle School, and then there's a teacher high school as well. So, there are five classroom teachers already in the proposed budget.
Okay.
Okay? So, those, those aren't included in this.
Mm-hmm.
So, remember, you know, part of this conversation is you, you could propose something different, and we will do the calculations for you.
I think it's, at least, understanding the concern for why not put a classroom teacher in as opposed to an instructional coach.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
One of the, one of my concerns is, a classroom teacher affects those students that are in their class. If we can make that teacher more effective as a teacher, they have, that benefit flows down to those students. If I can use an instructional coach to make 10 teachers... If I can use an instructional coach to make 10 teachers more effective, then that benefit's flowing down to all of those students. So the value of the instructional coach, just as the value of the coach to a football team or something else, goes to all of the members. So investing in that instructional coach to bring our teachers along, not only in the proficiency-based diploma law or that proficiency-based learning, but to make them more effective teachers in the classroom is an investment, in my opinion, that is well worth it to make our teachers more effective teaching the students that they're teaching. And by investing there and making more teachers more effective, we're affecting more students than you would if you just put a single classroom teacher in. That's, that's the trade-off that I see.
I was an instructional coach, you know, in my early years and understand that. I know we already have instructional coaches, so we've got a beginning point. But what I'm getting at is while we have instructional coaches, you know, can we postpone, you know, the addition of new ones down the road and take a look at the class sizes? Because what I'm seeing in some of the responses from parents is concerns about, you know, getting at the needs of all of the kids so that the only way they can keep, that a teacher can keep up with what the students' needs are when you're trying to make them, allow them to go as far as they can, as fast as they can. And my, my concern is I would prefer not seeing them in front of a computer to learn. I want to see a human body there and I want to see eye contact and interaction. So to me, the value of a teacher really far outweighs the coach from that perspective. So that is not that we don't have any coaches. We do. So that's what I'm looking at, you know, the importance of one versus the other and keeping the numbers down. Because the makeup of a classroom, there's a lot going on in there.
Oh, yes.
And as you know, you know, the behavioral levels are all over the place, you know. So you want them to be-
I'm trying to find my slide and we'll show the class sizes.
I would appreciate that.
I don't think there is an instructional coach on the elementary level anymore, correct?
There is none.
There is none. So we would be putting back something that's actually was effective, I think.
Okay, yeah.
And it's not, it's not, I mean, it's something that's kind of-
So we don't have one at all?
Don't have one at the elementary school at all.
At the elementary at this point?
That's six schools.
Six schools. So this one coach would have to go around those six schools.
Right.
That's-
That's a big job.
That's a big job in itself, so.
Important.
And if you, if you talk to the current instructional coaches, they are extremely busy. They're being called on by the teachers to get, provide that assistance.
The model is a good model. Don't get me wrong. What I'm trying to do is look at, you know, the needs.
It's a yin and a yang. We know that.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's a balance. That's why the five new teachers, teacher positions to address class size are there. But we also feel that, at least we as a group did when we asked for this addition, that an instructional coach was worth that investment of these monies that we have. So that was where we're-
It's important to note that you all wrestled with that already in the original proposed budget about the importance of reducing class size. So that, you did address, address that. Actually, better than we've been able to do in years.
Better than we've been able to do in the past.
So I think you all felt very good about that because we haven't been able to touch that in the same way where you have three teachers coming on to reduce class sizes. It needed to be. They, they had been growing over the years. So kudos to all of you for that work.
So we need to decide which way to go here?
Yes, that's, exactly.
Yeah, where we need to, you know, there are options. You, you can elect one of these two. If we're going to stay with the additional that we have asked for, the impact. Or we can say, no, we, we will not have, we will not use the money for that as we had suggested we were looking for. So you really have that, anything in between is, we asked for this impact. Here it is. We know we have that money coming from the savings on the, on the health insurance. This is how we asked to apply it and to see what that was. So here are those numbers. And so now she needs, the administration needs direction. Are we supportive of this as a, as a total budget? And then how do, how would we fund that with the balance of fund balance or not? You know, is there, is there a feeling which way we go that way? So that certainly, I think we want to be under the 3%, so I, I only think there's one choice. If we're going with all four. And if, if we are not supportive of all four, then what are we supportive of? But I'm, I'm of the mind, as we asked and we had that discussion, that the four are, are significant and helpful. And they're going to be a benefit to the district. And we stay within the, what we feel is a reasonable number, that 3% that the council has asked for. Adam's not quite as happy with us using as much fund balance. But I think it's a, it's a, it's an excellent investment. I think where we're going is-
If that the city, we're supposed to be at 2.1.
2.1, not 2.5.
That's a, right?
That's a 2.1.
We haven't gotten really a specific direction.
Combined with the city together.
That's what I-
That's what you've been hearing?
Well, that's-
I thought that's what the manager said.
Yeah, he said 2.1.
But the overall, that's the overall. We have heard from councilors and things that if we're under three, that's a good place to be.
We're meaning just-
They may not accept it, but that's-
Just school committee or together, school and city.
They're going to be lower than that, together, they're thinking. But if the, if the school committee came in under three, that was desirable. That's, that's what we understood.
Pricing index is 2.1 this year.
That's why it was limited to that. But they can, they can overrule that just with a vote.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah.
So-
So do we need a motion here?
Uh, we don't take a motion. We're going to do a thumbs up because we're not in a, in a regular meeting. Is a thumbs up if there's a-
Is it 7 o'clock yet?
You've got 10 minutes.
Good.
We're going to get there. If there's a sense of this group, which, do we want to, want to support all four positions? I mean, let's do a thumbs up. Are we, are we in favor of-
The four positions?
Yeah, the four positions that we've outlined. Is that something that we want to go forward with?
I'm, I'm kind of in between because I needed more, more information in terms of the entire-
Bob, do you know where you are on that?
I think, I'm agree with the four. I like the 2.85%.
Okay, so we've got one, two, and you-
No, I'm down.
Yeah, you're down and you're midway and we're up and up and up and up. So I think at this point, we're supportive of the four. And now we have two options to go with. We can either use more of the fund balance, which keeps us below that, call it an imaginary line of 3%, which I think we do, or we can use half the fund balance and we'd go above, as you said, by the figure 3.91. So a sense of staying below the 3%, is that where we want to go? Is just a thumbs up?
Yeah.
I want to stay below the 3%, but I'm very concerned using that much fund balance because we've relied on it for, what, five or six years? What are we going to do next year?
We've been 900,000 the last few years. This is bringing us down to six plus. So we are reducing the use of fund balance, this, with that number.
Right, but-
It's bringing us down a little bit at a time, not a huge number. You're on the finance committee, so you know those things.
I know, that's right.
And we don't know down the road. We have no decision made in terms of what's happening at the State Department.
That's right.
And we have, you know, the regionalization.
Now, the budget law has not been passed.
Hasn't passed.
So that's a big question mark right there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Definitely.
So am I-
I mean, I'm, I'm for keeping it below the three.
Keeping it below the three.
That's for sure, but-
I think that's where we are on that.
Now, remember, after the joint meeting, you'll have a budget workshop prior to May 2nd for their feedback. So we may get feedback and have to make an adjustment again. This is for you to bring forward to city council for them to respond to. And then we may be doing something different on that workshop. Does that make sense to everybody? So it's, it's not like this is-
Yeah, this isn't final.
This isn't final because you're going to get feedback on Monday. And then Wednesday, you're going to do workshop and then you're approving the budget Wednesday night.
Yeah.
So does that meet everyone's needs? All right.
We can outline your concerns. As we, as we go through the slides, there can be concerns around the use of the fund balance, those type of things. Yes. Okay?
I think we've completed it, Bob, within your timeframe.
It's a council goal, it's a committee goal to end workshops by 7 o'clock. Is it not, it's just not my goal?
No, right. It's our goal to keep them in a time, well timed. All right, thank you, everybody. So Monday night, 5:30 at city council.
Monday night, 5:30. Support the budget.